Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, December 10th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Luisee.
Present.
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am pleased to be here tonight, and first order of business tonight is an appointment, and I have one very special appointment to make this evening. And that is authorizing the appointment of Peter Costa to police officer effective January 7, 2019, with a 78-week probationary period commencing on the effective date pending approval of the Westchester County Department of Human Resources. Peter should be a very familiar face to everyone. He's worked for the Tuckahoe Police Department as our parking enforcement officer for five years. He's also been our court security officer for the village. He's worked for the town of Eastchester as their parking enforcement officer and dispatcher for four years. Peter's a graduate of Tuckahoe High School and was a criminal justice major at Westchester Community College. He lives here in Tuckahoe, and I feel he is going to be a fine addition to this great police department. And based on the amount of people who are in this room, it makes me feel good. I think we made a really good choice here. So with all of that, I'm going to make the motion to approve this appointment and ask for a second.
I second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
Very much in favor. Pardon me, Peter's joined tonight with his mom and dad and his brother Ryan. And would you like to come on up and take the oath? Musical chairs.
Like you're taking an oath, too?
So if you'd please repeat after me.
I, Peter Costa.
I, Peter Costa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Tuckahoe police officer.
The duties of Tuckahoe police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So Peter, would you like to say a couple of words? Wow!
Well, I'd like to thank the village board, as well as Chief Costanzo, for the opportunity to pursue my dream career of being a police officer in the village of Tuckahoe. I would also like to thank my family and friends, everyone here, for supporting me throughout this process and supporting my career path. I have been fortunate enough to work for both the Tuckahoe Police Department and the Eastchester Police Department for the past several years. I would like to thank every member from both departments for your constant support and guidance. Lastly, I promise to represent myself and the village of Tuckahoe to the highest standard. Thank you.
Well, we know you will. We're very, very pleased that you're joining the force. Based on all the people who are here, from not only the village of Tuckahoe Police Department, but from the Eastchester Police Department, tells us that you're very well-liked in our community. So congratulations on behalf of all of us here. Anybody like to speak? Omira, you want to say anything?
Sure.
So congratulations, Peter. I'm glad that you're no longer writing tickets, because you were very good at it. I can attest to that, but congratulations.
You mentioned that you've worked for Eastchester as well as Tuckahoe. I think what we got the long straw here. Thank you so much for joining us, when I'm sure you could have easily went to Eastchester. Thank you.
Congratulations, Peter, for an admirable career choice, and you're well-deserving of it. And one last question, who did we beat in the championship game in 2011? Only kidding. Best of luck to you.
Yes. Chief, would you like to say something?
First of all, thank you to the mayor and village board for this great appointment. Congratulations to Peter and his family. We know Peter's going to be a tremendous addition to the Tuckahoe Police Department. For the audience, and I guess they catch a little glimpse of it, this room is really filled with so many family and friends, elected officials, both former and present elected officials from the village, as well as the town. We have police officials, we have Chief Bonci, and probably two-thirds of the Eastchester Police Department here tonight. We have Inspector John Rowland from the Port Authority Police Department, and Captain James Luciano from the Westchester County Department of Public Safety, amongst others. And I have already warned them, this is not like the NFL Combine. Peter's ours, and he's here, he's going to stay with us for quite a while. As was said, Peter has proven himself, not only in his capacity as a parking enforcement officer, he worked in our courts and security. And the one thing that stands out is the way he deals with people, the way he's able to quell things when they somewhat get out of hand. He's got a great personality, a lot of charisma. As you can see, people love to work with him already. I know he's going to be a great asset to the Tuckahoe Police Department. We welcome him, we wish him a safe and long and fulfilling career. Before I close, I just want to also say, our other parking enforcement officer, Nicholas Manias, was recently hired by Palomana Police Department. So publicly, I want to wish him the best of luck and a safe career also. You know, we interviewed like seven people over the last year, started about a year ago with the hiring of our police officer, Brian Madden, and subsequently Zachary Leoni. So we know that we've gotten three outstanding police officer candidates. And you know, amongst that group, though, just as, to see the quality of people that we've interviewed and how these people have rose to the top, is that in that group, Joseph Keegan became a police officer with North Castle Police Department, Joseph Bosan became a police officer with Department of Public Safety, and John Calby became an Eastchester firefighter. Every single one of the people we've interviewed have been hired. It's probably like one out of 20 is usually the ratio of, you know, candidates that actually succeed and become appointed, and just goes to show the caliber of people and the pool that we had. So congratulations to all of them, and especially Peter tonight, it's his night, so congratulations.
Is there anybody else who'd like to say a word or two? So if not, we're going to take a pause, because I'm sure you don't want to be here for our boring meeting. And you have a lot of people here, so have a great time tonight. And again, congratulations, looking forward to getting your boots out on the street.
Congratulations. Congratulations, you must be proud. Congratulations. Big brother or little brother?
Big brother.
Congratulations, Peter, you have a great brother.
Okay, we're back. But the room is empty now.
No, it's not. We have.
No, we have some very important people here. Renee's here tonight. So let's see, we have no presentations or public hearings tonight. It's going to bring us to the adoption of minutes, the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of November 7, 2018. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to our first opportunity to address the board on anything on our agenda. Yes, yes, sir.
Evening, everyone. Anthony Fury, three Midland. On the survey for the traffic light, are you starting from White Plains Road all the way down to the square, or is this going to be Main Street?
Uh...
You guys number five?
Yeah.
Yes, that's resolution number five.
Oh, for Linkland, the survey.
It's not a survey of a specific traffic signal. We're actually looking to design three traffic signals, the one in Main, or Main and Midland, Fairview and Main Street, and Marble Dale and Fisher. So it's actually a survey, it's a topographical survey, and then a survey of all of like the underground utilities.
All right.
Once we have, once we have the survey in place, then we can ask for some grant opportunities to actually get the work done.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go right onto resolutions. Resolution number one is authorizing the mayor to sign an extension of the memorandum of understanding with Westchester County for continued access to Westchester records online. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? So what this is, it's actually a shared service, and this allows our attorney or clerk to access the land use, or the land rights website and legal website for Westchester County. So it's something we don't have to pay for, so.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing free, short-term parking in the business districts of the village of Tuckahoe to encourage local shopping during the holidays from December 22nd through December 25th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the extension of an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for police dispatching services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a professional services agreement with Mazer Consulting PA for the design of traffic signal upgrades as outlined in their October eight, pardon me, proposal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a professional services agreement with Mazer Consulting PA for the design of traffic signal upgrades as outlined in their October eight, pardon me, proposal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a professional services agreement with Mazer Consulting PA for the design of traffic signal upgrades as outlined in their October eight, pardon me, proposal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six, authorizing an extension of the services agreement with Complis Data Innovations for parking ticket management services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven, authorizing an agreement with David A. Barbeuti Architect dated November 8, 2018, for code consulting field inspections on village projects. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This firm is actually helping us with our inspections on the new hotel. The hotel is now, as everyone can see, that it's built up, and it's now at the point where it requires an awful lot of village onsite inspection. So we brought in this firm to help us out.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eight is authorizing the closure of Village Hall and the library on Monday, December 24th. Merry Christmas. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine, authorizing the modification of the long-term meter rate to $8.25 for 12 hours. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 10, approving vouchers in the amount of $1,000,000, pardon me, $1,641,910.35. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Pardon me. Discussion item, I want to talk about parking permits. So I'm actually going to kind of let Camille go through, give me a couple of minutes to regain my...
Okay, resident parking permits. The required documentation is that all cars be ticket-free. Property owners, you need a valid registration per car with current Tuckahoe address. We must be able to verify your name in our tax roll. If you are a new homeowner, a copy of your deed is required. Non-property owners, renters, we need resident parking landlord certification, a valid registration per car with current Tuckahoe address, a valid lease, a Con Edison bill for the current address in your name. Co-op owners must also provide a copy of their shares annually.
So the issue came up over the last month. Resident wanted to find out if he could get unlimited parking permits, because he has five cars. Pardon me.
The maximum that we give would be three. The way it works is, if you have one car and no off-street parking available in the two- and four-hour zones, you can get a parking permit as long as you meet the requirements. If you have two cars and you have parking for one car off-street, then you can get it for one of the cars. Then the same thing goes if you have three cars and you have off-street parking for two, you can get it for one. If you have it for one, you can get it for two. And then for three cars, if you have no off-street parking, you can get three. But if you do have off-street parking, then it would be, if you have two, you can get one, if you have one, you can get two. Three is the maximum by law that you can get.
Okay. So I have a question. So Camille, if you have three tenants in a house, and each tenant has a car...
That's three separate legal apartments.
Then each one can apply for a permit separately.
As long as they don't have off-street parking provided by the landlord. If the landlord has parking, he has to give it to them.
Got it.
And if they're not tenants, but they're children, so if there's five cars in the household, three is the most.
Three is the most. A household with five cars, more than likely, there would be off-street parking for two.
Right.
And you would choose the two that you don't want to put the permits on. And remember, you don't need a permit from 7:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning, it's just during the day. So out of five cars, I would think people would be working.
Right, okay. All right, good. Yeah, they had a question, so I'm glad, I haven't talked about that in a while. That's going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board. We'll start with Chief Costanzo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just one more footnote, and maybe I didn't catch the very beginning, but the permits can only be issued on streets that have an overtime restriction in the first place. So your home has to but a two- or four-hour restriction in order to even start the process of getting a permit.
Okay. That's a good point.
Just a couple of things. Just this, started Friday, and I think we've did the last signs today, installments, you'll see electric speed limit signs now on Oak Avenue, Yonkers Avenue, and Fisher Avenue. These are mobile devices, and it's really just to notify people who are, what their speed is, and if they're exceeding the speed, then they have to realize they need to sit around. It's worked in several of our neighboring communities. I want to thank Lieutenant Larry Rota for doing a lot of homework and instituting this program. He actually did, he got some unbelievable pricing on these devices, really about a third of what we thought we would have to spend initially. So hats off to him for really digging into it and finding us the best pricing. We plan on moving these signs around in some problem areas, just to educate people and, you know, let people know that, you know, there is a 30 mile an hour speed limit throughout the entire village. There are some areas where area speed limits are 25 miles per hour, and then there are some areas near the schools that are 15 miles an hour, so just to make our motorists aware of what their speed is. Secondly, this week, we are going to start installing winter signs, winter snow restrictions. Most notably, and the easiest really, is the no parking December 15th to March 1st. In a few areas of the village, those signs will be going up later this week. Snow zone signs are in areas where no parking is allowed from the moment that snow or any kind of frozen precipitation starts to fall and ending 12 hours after that precipitation stops. Most of our main thoroughfares where, that are narrow, Sagamore Road and many others throughout the village, have the snow zone signs. And, you know, usually in the very beginning of the winter, you know, people say, it only snowed two inches, it only snowed an inch, you know, why do I have a ticket? And really, it's really to facilitate snow removal. Really doesn't matter if it's a coating of snow, or if it's six feet of snow, the plows all have to be up, you know, they're wide, the big trucks, and in order for emergency vehicles, not only for snow facilitation, removal, but also to get emergency vehicles through, it really is the moment that snow starts to fall. So those signs will be going up. In our business districts, really, we're mostly where our most needed parking is, starting December 15th and ending March 1st, there's no overnight parking, 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. So that begins December 15th and runs through March 1st. And lastly, one bit of good news, I think, for our residents is, the alternate side of the street parking restrictions will be suspended as the signs get turned. And that lasts until usually mid-March or so, until we know that the, you know, the winter months are behind us. So the street signs that were for alternate side for street cleaning will not be in effect probably by the end of this week. The signs will be flipped.
Boy, we're all sick here tonight.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know. I think you're...
I have the courage.
I like going around.
Have the remedy.
It's a great commercial. Just finally, Merry Christmas. Happy last day of Hanukkah, or last few hours, actually. Happy Kwanzaa, or whatever, you know, your beliefs are. A joyful holiday season, and a safe and happy New Year to all.
Thank you, Chief, you too. Camille, anything? Collecting taxes, right?
Exactly. You know, the second half of village taxes are due without penalty by December 31st. All payments must be received or postmarked by that date. Payments received or postmarked after December 31st will be subject to penalty. The tax office will be open 8:30 till noon and 1:00 to 4:30 on December 31st.
Okay. Gary?
Since Deputy Mayor's not here, we have a zoning board meeting on Wednesday. The applicant, there's one application, it's 242 White Plains Road. He's looking to subdivide his property, and when he subdivides the property, the existing house needs some variances, so that's what he's doing before the zoning board. There's a special work session for the planning board on December 18th, and that's what we discussed with the Marble Dale Corridor, the guidelines to the master plan. So they'll be discussing that at the work session, and hopefully making recommendations to this board. Just so everyone knows that there's no public hearing at the work session, the public hearing will be before this board on those guidelines.
Very good, thank you. David?
Just one quick update. This week, with the hotel going up, and there's a lot of activity down there, they're actually going to start doing the excavation for the foundation of the restaurant down there this week, tomorrow, actually. DEC will be onsite. As they do that, there's the same exact protocols as we've done with all the other digging down there. The camp monitors will be in, the camp monitors will be there, so all the environmental protections need to be in place. On the other side of that, the DEC and DOH will be down on Friday, and they'll actually be witnessing some of the tests for the soil vapor extraction system, and the SSDS, such as sub-slab depressuration systems, for the hotel and that whole area down there. So they'll be doing some of the final checks on that to make sure that's all working properly. I would expect that there still needs to be some tweaks to that, but this is kind of the first show of getting all the pumps running and everything else going, so a lot of movement down there.
I'm just amazed at how educated you've become on all these stuff. It's incredible, that's for sure. Thank you. Our next village board meeting is going to be on January 7, 2019, and that's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we're going to start with Trustee Luisee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to begin with the Tuckahoe History Committee's report, who continue to be so very active here every Wednesday in Village Hall. Once again, Nick Zanzano and Phil White presented a history program here at the Tuckahoe Library. And again, in their continuing efforts to educate everyone about the history here of Tuckahoe, they had set up a booth at the Tuckahoe Senior Fair, which displayed artifacts and articles of historical interest here. They also did a tremendous job on providing information on World War I and Pearl Harbor for our local veteran committees. This morning, as a matter of fact, they took a class from Chapel School on a shore tour of Village Hall, and brought them around to see the diorama of the Marble Quarry and introduced them to Tuckahoe's history. Phil and Alice would like to thank all their volunteers for the great work that they continue to do throughout the year. And of course, their thanks to the residents for their great history donations. And lastly, Alice and Phil and the entire history committee would like to wish everyone here in the village a happy holiday and a healthy New Year. And now moving on to our Tuckahoe seniors, they had a fabulous holiday luncheon at the Davenport last Thursday. And for those of you who weren't there, you missed Mayor Eklund, county exec George Latimer, town supervisor Tony Colavita, and yours truly attempting to sing "Let It Snow" for the second year in a row. But it was a wonderful time we had by all. Fay Blazi will be setting up her jewelry table on December 18th, so if you need some last-minute gifts for someone, she has a fantastic display of jewelry. So December 18th, come down to Father Fata Hall and see Fay. And the seniors will end the holiday season on Thursday, December 20th, with a hot luncheon and a Christmas carol sing-along. The Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce is so generous, will be sponsoring a visit from Santa, along with gift bags and raffles. And on behalf of the Tuckahoe seniors, they also wish everyone here in the village a wonderful holiday season and a happy New Year. On behalf of my colleague, Tom Giordano, he also would like me to extend to all the residents of Tuckahoe a happy and a happy New Year. And if I may digress, I'm going off script here, it's not something that I usually do. I was here in Village Hall this past week, and I witnessed a, I don't want to say confrontation, but there was interaction between our village administrator, David Burke, and two residents here. And I just want, I understand the frustration of the residents that were here trying to obtain a parking permit, but I also want to commend David for his extreme calm in assessing the situation and trying to remedy the situation. And I just want to commend you, and I think the residents of the village need to know, you know, I was standing there for 20 minutes, and I was getting frustrated, because the resolution was not as easy as we thought it could be, but there was a resolution, and hopefully they will accept that resolution. But I just want to say, thank you. And lastly, I would just like to wish everyone here in the village a happy Merry Christmas and Happy Kwanzaa and a healthy New Year.
David is a very, very, he is, he's fantastic, and he has to cover that office, too, when Jackie's out. So, you know, we thank him for that. You know, we thank all our employees, but every once in a while, we'll see a little our employees, but every once in a while, we'll see a little extra gesture of kindness. I see that on a very steady basis from David. So, thank you. Appreciate that. Trustee Andino?
Before... I want to go off script, too, because I had a question about resolution number three. So if someone calls 911, I understand that they get dispatched to the county for police. What happens if someone goes to the precinct?
There's a emergency phone right there?
There's a phone?
Yeah, thank you. I should've said that.
Okay.
There's a phone right in the front wall. So if somebody were to approach the building, they actually just grab that phone and they're talking to that dispatcher.
Right. And then is someone sent to...
Well, somebody could. If, let's say, let's say you went to Village Hall and you grabbed the phone, you said, "I'm in distress. I need a police officer," then they would immediately dispatch somebody who was probably on Main Street or Depot Square, who would come right over.
Just wanted to clarify that for some residents. Okay. So the library is going to have a meet the author on December 12th at 6:30. Linda Cardillo is an award-winning author. She's written novels such as Dancing on Sunday Afternoons, Across the Table, The Boathouse Cafe, and The Uneven Road. So if you'd like to meet up with her and get a book, get it signed, come out on December 12th at 6:30. We also have workshops, math workshop for SAT and ACT, the tests. For those of you who know how expensive these tests are and these workshops are, I recommend that you attend 11 to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, December 15th is the next one, to have the SAT practice test. Also, I would like to give the mayor a shout-out. He's going to be doing Storytime on December 18th with... at the library for ages zero to eight. So if you want to come out and hear the mayor tell Storytime, come out and support the library. As I say every month, the library is very robust, has a robust program, and I encourage everyone to go on the website, see what's being offered, and to support the library. I also would like to echo the sentiments of Happy Holidays and Happy New Year, and also thank the staff and all of the departments for the work that they do for the village. Really, you do an exemplary job, and as Trustee Luise said, we have people who are really level-headed. I've watched and I've seen, and helpful. They want to help residents whenever there's a need. So I appreciate you guys. So, Happy Holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Can I jump in real quick about the library?
Yeah.
Just so everyone knows, the library will actually be closed the week of the 24th. That's the Christmas week. There'll be some improvements going on there. We're putting in new windows on the side where the parking lot is and doing some painting there. So that's going to be closed. Staff... Some staff will be there to do kind of cleanup and things like that, but the library's gonna be closed at that point for improvements.
So if they go on the library website, it'll come up?
It should be on there.
Yeah, so we'll make sure. Great.
Thank you. Trustee Danny Lang?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to start by thanking the Poe Foundation for their continued help with this year's Winter Fest. It was terrific. The weather wasn't the greatest, but just seeing Santa brightened things up for the little ones, so that was good. The goats, sheep, and horses didn't mind the rain either, so luckily, the hayrides continued. It was very great. It was nice. Most of all, the Persepio was as beautiful as ever and definitely a must-see for those who haven't. It turned out to be a wonderful weekend. So thank you to everyone who helped out, including the DPW. And speaking of DPW, I wanted to acknowledge Frank DiMarco on his Eastchester Environmental Award. Congratulations to him. Thursday night, he took home a lot of hardware. So, good for him. I would also like to wish Tuckahoe a great holiday season. Thank you. One other thing here. Yes, I would like to thank a couple of Tuckahoe residents, Bert and Melba, that joined us on our work session. They posed excellent questions in regard to our tax certs, and we believe the guests on hand brought some clarity to all of us. So thank you for, you know, to Bert and Melba for joining us. And again, Tuckahoe, Happy Holidays, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If my voice holds out. Actually, I had laryngitis terrible up till two days ago. I didn't talk at all. But tis the season, I guess, for all of us, including the chief. So I just have a couple of things. I want to mention that on this past Friday, I had the privilege to do something that I really, really enjoy doing, which is presenting a proclamation to somebody who has turned 100 years old. And, pardon me, Connie Rinaldi. She lives in the Fountains, and it's amazing when I meet some of these folks who are 100 years old. I remember giving a proclamation to a gentleman who was 103, and they had more energy than I do. It's just incredible. So, a happy birthday to her. We all sang her happy birthday. Our family was there. A lot of family members flew in from California, and it was just great to get a chance to talk to her. Last week, the Lions Club had their annual dinner, and they recognized the Broken Bow Brewery as our Business of the Year, so we want to congratulate them, and Basil Ciampi as Man of the Year. So it was a great event and very deserving honorees this year. So that's all I'm gonna talk about. I just also want to reiterate, Happy Holidays to everybody, and have a very safe and blessed New Year. So with that, it's gonna be the second opportunity to come on up and talk to the board. Pardon me, Renee, yes.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Renee Howell. I had the pleasure of being the race director for the Tuckahoe Challenge this year, so I've been meaning to come here and just talk a little bit about what happened this year. So first and foremost, we had over 250 participants this year. That is up considerably from last year. We had just under 200, and the previous year, we had about 160. So we've been making changes in the past couple of years. It's really helped to get more participants. One of the concerns of the people who have been volunteering on the race committee was that people... that this would not still continue to be a small-town race, and now that we've switched to an online registration, we're able to see where folks come from. So we know that 60% of the people who registered for the race came from Eastchester, the town, so Tuckahoe, Bronxville, and Eastchester, and over 40% came actually from Tuckahoe. So we were able to, even, you know, taking this race a little bit more into the current times, we were able to retain, you know, just getting a good attendance from our local group. And I think the furthest away, we had one or two people from the city take the train, and we did advertise that, and two people come from Connecticut. About 35% of the people who ran in the race were children under 14, which was another goal of ours. We really want to keep that... keep the children present and have it a family focus. So our lowest category is really 18 to 29-year-olds. So that's what we're gonna really work on next year, is getting that group on registration. We had a lot of help in getting sponsors, and our local businesses were very generous. John Galuzzi and Claire Gorman were able to see us through $4,600 in support from our local businesses with the major platinum sponsor of the Rafiani Family Foundation, and we're very grateful to all of them for their support. We were also able to take online donations through the online registration system this year. And the biggest switch we had this year was we used actual digital timing, a digital timing service, which now actually came to be very close to what we paid previously for actual humans to do it. But the advantage of this digital timing service was we were able to give the racers their results immediately after the race. So I think it was 30 minutes. We had all the award categories done, and we only had three discrepancies with the races, and we were able to take care of them that day. So we didn't have to, you know, whereas we had in the past, have to resolve things a couple of days after the race. So that all worked out very well. We had great support from DPW and from our police, so we want to thank you. We had officers from Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and the county present, and we had no safety issues, which was my biggest concern. And I also wanted to thank Mayor Eklund, who personally ordered and made sure all of our awards were correct. That's another important task, and to Trustee Lang for being there to help hand out those awards. And last... Lastly, I'd like to issue a challenge for next year. We're really looking to maybe change things up a little bit, have some participation awards to try to get the community businesses more involved, and some of the departments in the Tuckahoe community, such as the police and DPW, library. And I'd like to see all of the trustees out there this year. We can... You don't have to run. You can walk the one mile.
That's embarrassing.
So just wanted to let you know about that, about the race. The other thing I wanted to bring to the board was I also am active in the Eastchester PTA Council. I'm the president, and I wanted to give a shout-out to the owner of the Chocolate Box in Crestwood, Sabrina Sitaram. She has been helping us as we've been focusing on doing fundraising for the schools with local businesses. She has really stepped up and did a great fundraiser where we sold pies at the high school for Thanksgiving, and we were able to raise about $3,000 for a dog therapy program that's now being held through all the schools in the Eastchester District.
That's a lot of pies.
That's wonderful.
And that's it. So Happy Holidays.
And Happy Holidays. And we want to thank you, because the race was incredibly different this year, and it was really... Oh, there's the swag. Okay.
So they can see?
There's our beautiful village symbol.
And I'll tell you, Renee, you did a fantastic job this year. I mean, you know, the... when you say to improve the timing aspect, that's been torture for a lot of years. I mean, it's... it took so long for them to manually calculate on their app because the amount of time that it took some of these runners, their combined races. So I can't thank you enough. Yeah, really made a big difference.
Renee, do we know how old that oldest runner was?
He was in his 70s, because we did have an award in that category. So that much I know.
That's fantastic. And it was interesting to hear some of the information on where the people are running, where they're coming from, you know. Each year, I used to... Every once in a while, it seemed the guy was winning first places from a marina. I'm like, is there anybody from Tuckahoe here? But that's really interesting. I'm glad to hear that. A lot of Eastchester, Tuckahoe.
A very fast high school student, Patrick Buckley, and we shall be watching him, looking at him winning all the cross-country races, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Renee.
Mr. Fiora?
Just one, Anthony Fiora, just one public announcement. Tomorrow's Election Day for Fire Commissioner, December 12th. There's only one candidate running, so it's from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. All Tuckahoe residents vote at Tuckahoe Community Center. Eastchester, look at your addresses there, Bronxville, Village Hall. Even though there's only one, get out there and vote anyway. Get out there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so before we adjourn tonight, I would like all of us just to stand and reflect in a moment of silence for the passing of our 41st President George Herbert Walker Bush. May he rest in peace. So with there being no other business tonight, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. And do I have a second to that motion?
I will second.
All right, thank you. So this meeting is now adjourned. Till next time, Tuckahoe. Have a great evening and a very Happy New Year. We'll see you next year.
Merry Christmas.